Yes, sir.
Everybody? I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners for April 6th here at the Governmental Center. I don't know how much longer we'll be doing it at the Governmental Center, but right now we're trying to follow appropriate separation and provide the public information on what we're doing here. Tonight, I'm going to ask Lance Metzler to have our invocation, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Craig Travis if he would give us the Pledge of Allegiance afterward. So, gentlemen, if we could stand, and ladies, could stand with it.
If you would, please bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for letting us gather here today. Please help us be strong and faithful and do what's pleasing in your sight. Please help these commissioners make hard decisions for our public and for our community and for the protection of our community. This COVID-19 virus is a serious issue that we're all trying to deal with. We understand it's changing every so often and rapidly. Please help us be strong and help us give guidance to our commissioners and to leadership in the county to make sure that we do what's pleasing and right. Help us to be strong and faithful, look after all those who are less fortunate. Please bless them and please help us to do what we can to make sure their life is easier. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, you've had the agenda for several days now and a chance to review that. Do we have comment or motion concerning the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the agenda with removing item number seven and item number eight.
Motion made. Is there a second?
So moved.
And seconded. Further discussion?
You also need to add a closed session from the previous agenda.
We already had a closed session, but we added an item within the closed session.
I'll amend it to add that item within closed session.
Right.
So moved.
And seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed by nay. The agenda is accepted. You've also had the consent agenda for a period of time. The consent agenda includes items that are considered non-controversial. However, if anybody here or the public listening in has questions about anything on the consent agenda, please contact either our county manager or the clerk to the Board of Commissioners, Ms. Jennifer Wood. At this time, if there is no comment, we would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed by nay. I've already reviewed the list for public comment. Nobody has signed up for public comment. I would advise anybody listening in, particularly if you're inclined to address the Board of Commissioners publicly, to be sure and listen around until we get to some of our new business items because we will be adjusting our public comment process in the future. We're going to item nine, new business, and we're going to our county attorney.
Yes.
Councilor John Morris.
Yes, sir. Thank you. First, item of new business is considered granting a grace period for payment of Rockingham County occupancy tax due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And essentially, what this measure would do is that the reports, the occupancy tax reports would be due on time as it has been, as it always has been. However, those that are unable to pay the tax, typically what happens is that they pay the tax at the time the report is filed. But this gives an additional 60-day grace period or an extension of time, so to speak, if you will, of not having to pay at the time that the report is filed. And it's within the board's rights, its statutory rights, to waive any penalties and interest. So that would be what the motion before the board.
Gentlemen, I think we've all talked to the county manager individually about this, but is there any comment, question?
The only comment you can make is this excludes the property tax for vehicles because it's all part of the state inspection, so this ain't part of that, right?
Is that correct?
This is occupancy tax.
I just want to make sure the public knew that.
That's right.
At this time, we need a motion to approve or deny this request for board action.
I'll make the motion to approve the request.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by aye. Those opposed by nay. Mr. Counselor.
Yes, on to item number 982. This is considered adoption of interim procedures for public comment at Board of Commissioners meetings due to COVID-19. And then this is just temporary measures that we're going to put into place. Mr. Chair, I'm happy to read this in entirety because that would be helpful for the public to become aware.
I would appreciate you abridging this to the essence.
Yes. So, in essence, during the COVID-19 pandemic, the procedures are as follows. The public comment periods will be held only once per month, and that would be a change of what we've had previously, what our typical schedule is when we offer public comment at every commissioner board meeting, which is held twice monthly. All citizens desiring to speak during the public comment period must register on the sheets provided by the clerk to the board for the beginning of the comment period, which is the usual course of business. In compliance with the executive orders mandate for gatherings of no more than 10 people, citizens will wait in designated areas and be called into the board meeting room upon his or her turn to speak. While waiting, while in waiting areas, citizens must maintain a minimum distance of six feet from others. Depending upon the number of people signed up in public comment period, the county reserves a right to have citizens remain in their vehicles to wait until being called into the board meeting to speak. In addition to these modifications, all rules and procedures directed in the Rockingham County procedures governing public comment period and authorized by the Rockingham Board of Commissioners will remain in effect.
Commissioner Hall, I believe you had an item?
I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Mr. Morris, under item 32, where it begins, "All citizens desiring to speak," would you have any heartburn if we changed that to say, "Beginning of the meeting"? Typically, I think our meetings are held, folks should have to sign up prior to the beginning of the meeting. What I'm concerned about, if we allow that to stand at the comment period, we'll have people coming in and out of the room to address the clerk during the meetings, and I think that would be disruptive. Would you have any problems with changing that?
Not at all. That is a good suggestion and an easy fix.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we accept it with that modification.
Okay. Motion on four. You had a comment?
Yeah, I just got a question for the commissioners. What would be the harm in just suspending it altogether? And if anybody's got comments, they can shoot us an email and we can read it during commissioner meeting.
There's still a statutory requirement at this point to have at least one per month for the public.
For public hearing, for public hearings, right?
Public comment. There's a requirement.
Really?
Yep.
Well, why couldn't they, we set up a mic in somewhere wherever they at, and they don't have to come here, they can just speak?
I'd leave that up to Derek, whether, how that would work out.
I was just trying to make it what's easy because I hate for the public even to have to come here to make a statement if they can do it via phone or, it's much rather of them not even be here, but I want to give them a right to say something either by email or by phone. But the best case would be for them not even come down here to begin with.
They have that right to send an email to us, but if you open up the phone, I mean, we could be here all night long.
True. True, true point.
Well, the other question, excuse me, the other question I would have is, under procedure like that, how would you verify the person, their address, and their identity? At least with them appearing in public, you see who the person is, and they're generally known in the community.
Okay.
So, you know, that's the concern I would have. But I would also say that with this being interim procedures, if staff develops a better procedure or they find something else, I would hope that they would bring us something else in the future.
Yeah, I'll share with you, Commissioner Travis, the county manager and I talked about this at some length, and in particular, we had some apprehension about using the telephone for this purpose. But as you well pointed out, Commissioner Hall, we could be changing this at any time and let's hope that we're changing it back and not too. I still have a motion on the floor.
I'll second.
And seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed by nay. The items have. Counselor Morris.
Yes, the next item, 983. This is consideration of adoption of a resolution to implore all residents and businesses to monitor and adhere to executive orders, North Carolina Executive Orders 116 through 122 and 124, the Rockingham County State of Emergency as amended, CDC and NCDHHS recommendations and guidelines. And before I start in reading this resolution, as been prepared, I want to make note that the administration, not just council, has worked on this and prepared this for the board's consideration. So I will read this resolution. Whereas the World Health Organization has designated the COVID-19 outbreak as a global pandemic, and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services has urged all North Carolinians to take steps to reduce the spread of infection, and whereas, as a result of the aforementioned COVID-19 pandemic, the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners has determined that there continues to exist a threat of community spread or severe illness and, in extreme cases, the loss of life. And whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, NCDHHS, provide up-to-date guidance on the COVID-19 pandemic and safety measures for individuals, businesses, and industries. Now therefore be it resolved, the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners first and foremost seeks to ensure the county is healthy and safe and that it does hereby recognize the extreme health risk that COVID-19 and the COVID-19 pandemic presents to individuals, businesses, and industry in Rockingham County. The governor of the state of North Carolina has issued Executive Orders 116 through 122 and 124, which among other things orders essential businesses and the necessary guidelines to continue to operate and orders individuals to stay at home except as authorized under said orders. Rockingham County has issued a State of Emergency as amended, which among other conditions provides essential businesses the necessary guidelines to continue to operate and orders individuals to stay at home except as otherwise authorized under said State of Emergency. The Rockingham County Board of Commissioners recognizes that the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services provide up-to-date guidance on the COVID-19 pandemic to better ensure the health and safety of our county. Individual businesses know how to implement policies and procedures adhering to NC Executive Orders 116 dash through 122 and 124, the Rockingham County State of Emergency as amended, CDC, and NCDHHS guidelines to protect their employees and customers. The Rockingham County Board of Commissioners implore all individuals, businesses, and industries within Rockingham County to constantly monitor and adhere to NC Executive Orders 116 through 122 and 124, the Rockingham County State of Emergency as amended, CDC and NCDHHS recommendations and guidelines. These recommendations and guidelines can be found online at the following web addresses. For Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, www.cdc.gov/coronavirus. The North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services is www.ncdhhs.gov. And then the Rockingham County Health and Human Services, www.rockinghamcountypublichealth.org. Adopted this, the, sorry, what was the, the 6th of April 2020 by the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners.
It's the 6th.
Before we start our comment there, well read there, Counselor.
Thank you.
Except for that cough right there at the end got us all nervous.
County Manager, Mr. Metzler, anything that you might want to add in regard to implementation of this resolution?
No, this resolution just was created to make sure that the public was aware and the public made sure that they were following these different organizations because, as we have mentioned in the past, it's fluid, it's constantly changing, and we can change this every day. At least this gives us a guideline, the citizens a guideline to follow and make sure they adhere to the rules of the CDC, the state, and the Rockingham County Public Health Department.
And where and when can our citizens expect an update?
Do I?
Where and when can we, our citizens, expect an update? It's on the website, is what I'm understanding. It's on the website, and we're going to be doing it?
On a regular basis. I mean, we meet daily to discuss this.
I'm specifically talking about the Rockingham County Health Department, update on this Thursday and subsequent Fridays.
Oh, yeah, well, that's not, that's where the mayors and the managers will be meeting and discussing, having a conference call with them this Thursday since we're closed for Good Friday, and then on Fridays from here until this pandemic is behind us.
The point being that we're encouraging people to get on our website and find out whatever the latest thing is happening in Rockingham County. And if you have specific questions, use these email addresses or call our health department here at the county.
And we're constantly updating the website with the latest and greatest, so if they're interested, please go to our website and review that, and if you have any questions, please call the county.
And we've got links on our website to the state Health and Human Service.
Yes.
And to the CDC. Is that, okay. Comment or questions by the other commissioners?
Well, I just want to thank Susan and her team for everything they're dealing with, and certainly thank Lance and his team as well because it is ever-changing, and I know they're getting pulled in different directions, and I know it's stressful, and we certainly appreciate everything that y'all are doing.
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second. Moved and seconded. I think I might mention at this time before we call for the vote that this does not preempt what municipalities might be doing on their own, and that you should find it fairly consistent with what you've heard or read. The question has been called. Further comment? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed by nay.
Thank you.
Mr. Lance has turned in.
He's done.
Counsel's done.
But it sounded so good.
New business bait.
Okay, Lance.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just wanted, there's really no action to take on the budget process other than I wanted to inform you of where we are. I've got Paul here because he does kind of the legwork at the very, actually through the process, but the very beginning, he does a lot. But the past three weeks, we have been consumed with dealing with the pandemic, be it on conference calls or web views with the state, the federal government, and so we have not put any time whatsoever, well, not as much as we should, into the budget process. I've been in the budget, I've done, this is my 26th budget, and I've never seen anything like it. I've been through, you know, hurricanes, tornadoes, the 2008 recession, 9/11, but nothing quite like this. So you'll see a budget that's totally different than what you would normally see in a regular year, and I'm going to have Paul kind of tell where we are and what to expect.
Yeah, like Lance said, we're just making it up as we go along right now. I think the first thing we're going to try to do is suspend performance measures, how you normally get performance measures in with your budget, and deal with those after the budget adoption so that we can spend more time evaluating departmental requests. And mostly, you're going to see large items that we would have had time to evaluate more in-depth get put off, so that may mean coming back during the year, letting the board discuss some of those items. We'd rather not recommend something or not have it in the budget rather than not evaluate it and put it in. So, yeah, we're kind of going along. Hopefully, some of the administrative parts of this is taken care of as for now, but they say the worst is yet to come, so we will see, but hopefully.
Are there any questions about the budget process or any concerns? Or, again, you know, it's going to be a moving target. I know that we typically, in a typical year, we don't like to make modifications during the year, but this is going to be an abnormal, abnormal situation for us.
Commissioner Travis.
Paul, I appreciate what you're doing with the technology today, you know, with, you know, thinking video conference. Are you thinking about us all doing a little video conference to go through some budget items, or have you any, got to that point yet?
I hadn't got to that point yet. I think when we get to the budget meeting where we all sitting here, we'll come up with something that meets everybody's needs. Don't know what the guidelines.
It depends on where we'll be. You know, we don't know exactly when we're, you know, there's estimations on when this pandemic is going to peak, but we're not guaranteed anything, so we're just not certain. I mean, it could go into June. I mean, potentially go with the same budget you had this year until you're able to get one in place. It's not ideal, but it's a plan.
Yeah, our goal is to try to follow the same timeline that we had before, but just making note of things that we weren't able to fully evaluate and then kind of putting them out there, and things like new staff, really, service expansions. Before we got hit with COVID, I think everybody's thinking it's going to be a good year, so we got a lot of requests, and that's all changed. And departments know that that's changed and what we're planning to do, and any pushback on that.
Commissioner Pertle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if I understand it right, Paul, when you share with us your, the budget that you're working on or you're going to craft, we shouldn't get overly excited about the fund balance because it's not going to have any large capital request in it.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be missing, anything that we can put off, unless we feel very comfortable with it, we're going to put off.
Yeah.
And what we're telling departments is that if it's something that the board wants to come back and revisit during the year, they certainly have the power to do that. We want to be extra conservative because we don't know what this is going to do to revenues. We don't know what it's going to do to sales tax.
And let me, and just to follow up on that, will there be, do you think you will need any additional time? I know you said that you would love to, or you'd like to continue to follow the timeline that you presented us back in January. However, do you think you'll need additional time to evaluate the personnel side of that? I mean, it's easy to put off the capital, but the, to evaluate where you are on personnel and needs or what, do you anticipate that throwing a wrench in your timeline?
I think by law, we have to have a recommended budget to the board by the end of May.
Yeah.
I mean, we're going, we're going wide open. It's kind of unknown right now. If we do nothing but work on budget, or I work a lot on budget, then we'll obviously get done faster if something comes up in the next couple of weeks where I need to be pulled away to help with the manager, then that will change that timeline.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Other questions? Other comments?
Thank you, Paul.
Mr. Chair.
Still, there's uncertainty.
Commissioner Hall.
No, that's fine. I was just going to say, the only issue I had is when you said you've not spent as much time on this as you should. I think you've been spending your time properly, and that's ensuring the safety of Rockingham County residents. That's our number one issue right now, the budget. We'll deal with, and I feel confident that you guys will come up with something we can live with. But, you know, we know that time is limited. You guys have been working seven days a week. We appreciate that. So I just, that was the only thing I heard that bothered me. I think you're spending your time where you should, so just don't apologize for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Comments? Paul, we thank you for that. I don't believe we need any action at this time. We look forward to your guidance when you're able to firm up some of those nebulous dates. Mr. County Manager.
All right, the next one is a little interesting. So with the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, the state, the feds came out with two new acts. One is the Emergency FMLA. The other is the Emergency Paid Leave Act, and I've got a memo that's in your packet. Under the Emergency Paid Leave Act, qualified employees are eligible for 80 hours of sick leave if they meet one of the five criteria that I've provided in your packet. Under the Emergency FMLA, the county must, must offer qualifying employees an additional 10 weeks of pay when an employee is unable to work or telework due to the need for children care or the schools are out and being closed from the pandemic. Both of these requirements allow the county to exempt employees in both public health and emergency responding fields due to their critical nature of healthcare providing and first responders during this time. So, given the need to continue serving the public during this time, I recommend that several positions be excluded from Emergency FMLA. Number two, and the high risk of complications from COVID-19, provision of provisions two of emergency paid sick leave. And three, provision five of the emergency paid sick leave in regards to childcare. Not limited, not limited to, but public safety, public health, and staff training specialized areas that are needed to assist or in the crisis. An example that would be would be fire marshal. We've got two fire marshals that are EMTs that could jump into place in case we need them. Again, it's not the best situation, but without key positions there, it could cripple our operational staff and potentially compromise the safety and welfare of our county, and I do not want that to happen. So I would respectfully request that you all approve these exemptions.
Question or comment? I would entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve as amended or recommended.
Second. Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed by nay?
Thank you.
Before we move on to commissioner comments, have we covered the items that you thought essential for, that we should share with the public regarding anything but particularly the virus problem?
I think we've made it clear that, again, we meet on every day, several times a day, and it's important that our community takes heed as far as what CDC says, what the state says, and what our public health department says. It's important to stay at home if you can stay at home. Businesses, try to abide by what you can. I'm very excited to see that a lot of these corporate businesses have done their due diligence to make sure that people abide by what they're supposed to. So, again, my big thing is if they can, stay at home.
Before we get started, can we ask Susan to come back in here to give us an update where they are?
Is she out?
Is she gone?
We can ask her. Let's check it out.
I mean, I'd at least like to have the public know because I get calls all the time. I thought we had five. News said we had 19, you know, and stuff like that.
Well, this might be a good time for me to make a comment because people do make inquiries of us, and frankly, your commissioners are not at liberty to share everything that they're given. There are HIPAA regulations out there, and we're privy to the information that is absolutely private, and we will do our best to protect that privacy. Susan, thanks for coming back. Commissioner Travis wants to know.
Can you just give us, the public, an update on how things are looking in Rockingham County and what criterias, when someone gets tested positive, what happens? Because I've gotten emails of, somebody at Food Line with the virus is positive, and I'm like, no way it is, you know, that's a lie.
Right. Now, once a person tests positive, they are contacted. Usually, a lot of our people have been in the hospital, so the hospital is doing really good information about when they are discharged, they have to stay at home, and actually, you have to stay at home for 14 days and be isolated once you either get tested positive or leave a facility. And then you stay at home. Your close contacts also have to stay at home. They're asked, you're like husband, wife, children, everybody within the household is asked to stay at home for those 14 days, and if anybody starts to have symptoms, then of course, then their time starts from the time they start to have symptoms, that they're isolated for that time period. Everyone is being followed up on. We are doing contact tracing. The state has said that we do not have to do that, but we have contact traced every single one of our cases. So we have looked in to see where they could potentially have gotten exposed, and we have traced back to do some teaching at places that we've seen that we probably needed to do. Like, we did have some areas that we did touch base with some people and to make sure that they were following recommendations that were set forth by the state. So we have very much been on top of that and very much doing the contact tracing to make sure everybody is following the rules and not going back out into the public while they are symptomatic and making sure all the families are taken care of.
Right. And one of the biggest things I get, especially when you put out information, they'll call me and say, you know, where was it in the county? Or you said Reesville, but where at in Reesville? I want to make sure I'm not around there. Can you explain to the public why you don't give all that information out?
Well, we can give a little more information out as our caseload grows, but I can tell you right now, we have cases in Reesville, Stoneville, up in the areas up to the north, Madison, and all those areas. So I'm... So almost everywhere in between, Eden is still safe right now. So everywhere else basically has areas that have, have had people that have tested positive.
Right, okay. And just give us the public update on where we are right now as a county as a whole.
I think we are in a very good place right now as a county as a whole. We are having a minimal amount of cases. I mean, our case levels look great. I mean, we are still testing.
Six, right? Six?
Six, yes. We have six cases currently, and we've had one death. But we are having, testing is still being done by the hospitals. We are still doing testing. We have physicians' offices that are still doing testing. So there is still tests going on to make sure that we can kind of find pockets of people that we need to address certain issues.
And let me ask you this. I get the report from Cone Hospital too.
Yes.
Can you release that information to the public as well on our site?
We will have to ask about that. I think that will be up to Cone if we can release that, but it seems to be pretty much public information because I also received that information. We discussed it in our meeting today about how many cases are in the hospital, how many cases are in the ventilator.
What I thought was interesting was how many cases were, have already been tested, how many came back positive, how many came back negative.
Right.
I think the negative side is what I like to hear.
Right.
The more, you know, that side. So maybe that'll help.
And we can put some data on there too because we do have a run-in log of our negatives that we have tested here that we know of within the county. We don't, aren't getting all the negatives back because the state stopped putting them in our workflow. At a certain point, I asked personally the state to put them back in so we could see all the negatives, but it was too many for counties like Guilford and Davis and some other counties, so they stopped doing that because they were testing people at the drive-through sites. And so we are just going by what we can calculate as far as numbers and the negatives, but we have tested a lot of people that have been negative, which is great.
Well, I think that's a fine line. You know, we want to try to inform the citizens as much as we can, but you've got some that are already scared, and they want to know more information. They feel like the county's not giving enough information, so maybe we can find a fine line there to share what we can.
We definitely will, and we actually pushed some information back up to the state today to ask if we share a little bit more information. We're waiting for an answer.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. You and your staff too. Tell them thank you for all the work.
I definitely will. It's a team effort, definitely.
Commissioner Pertle.
Thank you, Susan. I know Commissioner Travis was talking about, and I get the same email with the data from Cone, but I'd be very interested as, you as the leader of the Health Department, you compiling all that data and giving us something that is, give us a snapshot of the entire county.
Okay.
If that makes sense. I think that's, that's important because it, as the Health Director, you know, I rely on you.
Okay.
And the information that you provide us. And gathering that information from all sources is, I think, is critical when you, when you advise us.
Okay, I can do that.
I've got one thing. Chairman, you mentioned once someone tests positive, they're quarantined for 14 days.
Yes.
But it's, there's a presumptive positive, and then the results come back some period of time later, but they're quarantined.
The presumptive positives are quarantined also. They're, they're considered a person under investigation, and at that point, they are also quarantined until they, one, get a negative test result back, or, two, get a positive. But they, everybody gets the same guidance. They're all to stay at home for that 14 days from the time they are tested.
Right.
Or the time that they do a teledoc visit where they may not be testing, but they're also telling those people to stay at home for 14 days also, even though you don't have a definitive diagnosis, we're asking you to stay out of the public for 14 days.
And I think that's another thing a lot of citizens don't realize. Your department does investigation. You see this person that's positive.
Absolutely.
And y'all investigate. Y'all want to know who he's been in contact, where they been. And I try to tell all the, says, look, if the Health Department hasn't contacted you, then you're okay.
Absolutely, because we are contacting everybody that we know that is associated with this, you know, these people. So we are definitely going out and contacting everybody that we can that's associated.
Thank you.
One more thing, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, Susan, will you just share with the, with the audience that we have here today, if they have a question, what's their best source to get the information they need?
Well, there's lots of sources out there. 211 has stood up a lot of resources just for general information on COVID-19. We have an internal line for our medical providers to call there. Our website has a plethora of information. If you have more specific questions, you know, you can always call the Health Department. They will direct you to either my triage nurse or any of our folks here. We will be glad. I've answered multiple phone calls today myself, just from worried citizens, from business owners, from the gamut, and we are always available here to help and give information. If somebody just wants to talk to somebody, we're here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
More questions will be coming, but we appreciate your efforts so far, and let's hope we can stay at six.
And, and that, you know, communication is always the biggest issue in any event, so we will continue to try to improve on that.
And I think that's one thing that's very important, Mr. Chairman, is that, as the manager said earlier, having our Health Director available to get that information out to the other municipalities so that, you know, they are up to date on what is going on in this county. And, you know, as we all know, the more we communicate, the better we can serve all the citizens of Rockingham County.
Right. And I try, I try my best to tell people, you know, I know you want to know where these viruses are, but act like it's your next door neighbor.
They're everywhere.
Just constantly act like it because you got asymptomatic and all that, so, you know, you might be carrying and don't even know it, no symptoms, and so just act like everybody's got it for right now.
Absolutely. That is, that is a good way to think of it, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, have we covered all items?
Yes, sir.
Then we'll go to Commissioner's comments, and I'll start with, you're on a roll there, Commissioner Travis. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Look, I just want to tell everybody, especially the citizens, you know, I know it's a scary time, but hey, this is an opportunity now to look on the bright side of this. This is a time for you to cook for your family, watch a movie with your family at home, you know, work out in your yard, get that honeydoodle list done. You know, this is a great opportunity for you to reconnect with your family. And I know it's a terrible time to be sitting at home, but, you know, it's all, it's all based on how you look at things. And for me, you know, I've been enjoying my time with my son, my wife, I've been cooking every evening. It's things I've never done because I work all the time now. I'm at home, so I'm trying to do my part. So, you know, get to know your family and reconnect with them, and enjoy your time while you're staying at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pertle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I'd like to thank the citizens of Rockingham County for their response to date in dealing with this COVID-19 virus. As stated earlier, we have six cases in the county. We should continue to practice personal responsibility every day. Whether you're a business owner that follows the CDC guidelines in providing the most possible, or the safest place possible for our citizens to work and shop, or whether you're a citizen who goes to the supermarket, have, use that personal responsibility, take the personal responsibility that you have, and, and go in, take a list, shop smart, go in with a, with a list, purchase your items, and get out and get home. You know, we can get through this virus together, but we have to take some personal responsibility in our daily activity. And with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Berger.
Yes, sir. We do recommend that businesses put in place the procedures to keep your employees and customers safe and healthy. Help by cleaning surfaces on a regular basis, have employees wash their hands, and limit contact as much as possible. Also, provide workspace to ensure distance is maintained between employees and customers to help limit the spread of the virus. Also, for businesses, if you believe you've been impacted by the pandemic, reach out to the bank that you typically use or your account, or your accountant to inquire about the program set up by the Small Business Administration. They offer payroll grants as well as disaster relief loans. If your bank's not an authorized lender for the program, there are several in the county that are. I'd encourage you to reach out to some of those other local lenders here in Rockingham County to help you get through this, this problem. Also, want to thank many of our local churches for providing services by video feed. You're helping by keeping people apart based on the recommendations of the healthcare professionals and continuing to allow us to worship. Although we may not be in the same room, technology has made it where we can still worship together. As called on to do, it just takes us a little bit extra effort to get there. We do need to pray for each other, pray for those that are dealing with the illness and the loss of loved ones during this difficult time that prevents them from coming together. People do feel isolated during those times due to the measures that are in place. These are the people and the families that need your thoughts and prayers the most. Thank you for tuning in tonight, and I want to thank everyone here for working together.
Thank you, Commissioner Berger. Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'd like to thank everyone for tuning in tonight as well during this scary time. We live in a wonderful community. Usually, when we hear these tales of disaster or just terrible events happening, it's in another country, in another region, or another state. Well, guys, unfortunately, that's not the case this time. Tonight, the virus is here in our county, and so we can't have business as usual. We can't go about life like we normally do. So that's why you constantly hear everyone pleading, pay attention, take this seriously. We've got to follow the advice of our leaders, as we mentioned tonight. And the reason we're doing this is to save the lives of our friends and neighbors, so please, I implore you, take this seriously. Wash your hands, stay at home as much as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. I'd like to reiterate that the Health Department here in Rockingham County is taking the lead for us in helping filter information and provide us as much, and in the future, we'll be providing updates. And I assure you that this board is going to do their best to make any further decisions based on data that's hard rather than speculation or rumor. I'd like to offer thanks to the public in general. I think in general, the public of Rockingham County is trying to adhere to the guidance as best they can, and that's the, and for that reason, we have a relatively small number of cases to deal with, and that's absolutely essential to have public support. I'd like to point out and thank businesses that have been responsible. I went by a pizzeria, and those guys not only had spacing delineated, but they had set in place procedures so that folks could make their orders and make their pickup with minimal contact with anybody else. And on top of that, there was hand sanitation and rubber gloves left outside. So small businesses as well as large businesses. And if you haven't been to Walmart or some of these other big stores, most of those are totally in compliance in coming up, going the second mile, if you would, and coming up with other ideas. I'd like to thank our staff here. They, they make the adjustment for our venue. They, they keep us informed at all times, and they're checking on what's going on in other counties in parallel organizations, which I think is critical to what's going on. I particularly want to thank my fellow commissioners. They're probably tired of seeing my number pop up on their phone, but our commissioners have stayed on top of this. They've collected information, they've reviewed data, they've checked resolutions out there. And I think, more importantly, they've stayed in contact with our municipal parallels, the mayors and town councilmen, and collected general information. And so commissioners, I think that behooves us to keep doing that, but I want to recognize every one of our commissioners for being part of that. And to the public in general, I would just say, this, this whole coronavirus situation is maybe the most significant challenge that anybody's faced, you know. I didn't go through World War II and some things like that, but this is a huge challenge. And it is a war that has to be fought against the virus. We don't need to create anything else in addition to that, but it is going to require some significant habit adjustments. Commissioner Pertle was pointing out that we need to do certain things as far as keeping separation, and of course, we need to do the sanitation things with our hands and so forth, and it's tough. But tell your children, tell anybody else that's around you, remind them that they need a hand wash, remind me that they need, remind them that they need space, and that these essential businesses are open for essential business and not for casual adherence. It is a time to have common sense. And I'm particularly happy to be in Rockingham County because we are, I think, by and large, doing the best we can, and we're looking for any other measure that we might do. You're in a good place. At this time, we're going to need to move into closed session, and we will be staying in place to do that, gentlemen. If you will look at item 11, we need a motion to go into closed session to look at those items under the North Carolina General Statute.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, A1, A4, and A5.
Motion made.
Pardon?
Was there another one that you added at the beginning of the meeting? Or was that already, that's just an addition from?
I think it's just an additional item within.
Within one of those, okay. All right.
I think it's covered under the general comment about expansion of industries. All right, second. Moved in second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by nay? We are now going to move to closed session.